Are we recording? All right.
So.
Uh, might be, there's an extra page. We'll see if there is.
All right, so five forty-five, we're gonna open up the uh negotiations opener. And the Decorah Education Association will present their first proposal to the Decorah Community School District Board.
Um, okay, well, I just wanna thank everyone for meeting tonight as well as uh for giving the two contract days after Memorial Day this year. Um, this, that is. We're thankful for that, that is, that is nice. Um, I do a couple of questions that maybe we can answer at another time, um, but I, we handed out the. Uh, bulleted proposal. Um, Mr. Riley couldn't be here today, but at the second page, cover some things that uh. Mr. Nimrod himself started and then he and I met with each other about throughout the process. Um, I should be able to answer most questions about those items, um. But he's busy doing other things uh around the district tonight. Um. So. If you want me to go through. Items I can, or if we just wanna look through and read through, we can do that.
You know, it'd probably be helpful to, if we talked about, if you just kinda talk through the um.
The top three, basically.
Well, I would say the, the compensation ones.
Okay.
Um, and uh. Um, well, I don't wanna tell you which ones to present to.
Okay.
So I don't wanna, I, I do, I would say that we traditionally have conversations about um. What I kinda, we have that supplemental positions document, and so. We didn't necessarily break down, we just wanna, our proposal will say, yeah, we wanna talk about those things for sure. But you're more than welcome to talk about everything, but probably the key points would be, would be helpful.
Yep, okay.
They're usually first.
Um, we are in what we believe is a little bit of a unique situation than what I would call typical um negotiations. Um, which the first point is, we're not asking for any base increase. Um, we have the last probably four years kind of tracked how that has gone. And we've gotten, what we feel is, is very solid base increases. Um, but when we compare ourselves to other districts, we haven't closed a gap. But that's, we started looking at other means of trying to close that gap between ourselves. And uh state average as well as other uh districts that we are generally compared to. So that brings us to the first few items on this list. Would be um increasing the educational lanes from the master's lane, MA plus twelve, MA plus twenty-four by four percent each. Um, the A, B, and C is what the new percentage would be, multiplier would be. Um, in addition to that, um, increasing the experience steps sixteen through thirty by one percent each, um. While maintaining the maximum multiplier of one point eight eight seven five. I didn't list what all those out would be, I have it on a uh. Google sheet if you'd like to see those numbers. Um, the next one is adding step six to schedule B. Our current schedule B for all coaches and sponsors uh positions goes to five years and that, that maxes out. Um. Caveat to getting to step six would be all years within that activity. Uh, would have to be consecutive and in the Decorah Northwind District to be eligible for step six. For example, if uh Joe coached in Wacon uh. Middle school track for ten years, comes to Decorah, he wouldn't immediately go to step six. He would start at step five until he got, was six consecutive year in Decorah, and that would double step five. Um, a competition advancement per diem. Um, asking for. And I'll use, I'm gonna use football as an example because it, it is structured in a way that is pretty easy to, to explain, so. Each activity has an official start date and a official. First postseason date, and that would be considered your regular contract. If you are successful in your first postseason. Competition, you move on. At that point, you're putting in additional time. For no compensation, so the example that I use, if, if the football team goes oh and nine and plays nine games are paid the same. As if they would go and win a state championship and go twelve and oh. Um, and every other activity on there. Each one's different. Um. But all will be included on an individual basis. Speech, for example, um, there's large group, there's individual, the schedules are all different. So those would be things that would have to work down on a specific basis. Um. The rest of those, I think, are items that we can ask uh individual questions about, things that we've kinda um talked about in the past a little bit. Um, that we can get into those weeds if, if we want to, as you have questions, so. Any questions about the things that I initially presented?
Man. Uh, so number three, the step uh. I wrote down step, started step zero, but looking at this, it's uh starts at step sixteen.
Correct, and um, I can airplay or something if you'd like, we took a look at. So we've looked at a number of ways to balance our experience steps. Right now, they're pretty random increments, um, we've talked about that for a little bit, and. The, as we look at the amount of increase. From year to year, at year sixteen, the numbers drop significantly, so for example. If I go from my fourteenth to fifteenth year with a BA plus twelve. I, my contract by itself increases by nineteen hundred and thirteen dollars. From my fifteenth to sixteenth year, it increases by six hundred and fifty-six dollars, so a significant drop of an increase there. That um. Says, okay, at year sixteen, that's where things change. And then we've also talked about with this process of maintain that one point eight eight seven five. Once the experience step prior to it exceeds it, then that one eight eight seven five just moves up a year, so. With this process, we continued adding one percent each year to those steps. Not next year, but the following year, we would have a twenty-nine year salary schedule. And you, and it, it takes about two years for a step to overtake that one eight eight seven five, that one would just move up.
Um, we'd like to get to twenty-five rather than a thirty, a twenty-five year schedule over time.
Um, and that decreases the. The gap over time from state averages as well as uh competitive or comparable districts. Um, with the gap that we've, that we've talked about. The cost is about approximately, it's less than thirty thousand each year, so over a ten year span. Um, with our current staffing uh fulfillment, um, is about three hundred thousand dollars over ten years to get us to a twenty-five year schedule. Um.
Well, let me ask a question to make sure I've got this right, so with, at. Year twenty-five instead of year thirty, would reach that one point eight eight seven five.
Correct, over a ten year period.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kinda, I, I hate to say I, I, I understood it, but I actually did. Which may not be good for me or you, but. As, as the index gets big enough, it kinda rolls up and it catches up to, so what Matt's saying is in two years. If you, you're kinda freezing step thirty and you're saying. If you increase the index, then in two years, twenty-nine will match thirty, and so then we can just lob thirty off. And in two more years, twenty-eight, now, when you say that's thirty thousand to do that.
With our current staffing.
With our current staff.
To add one percent.
To a ten, one percent from year sixteen through thirty, the cost to do that is about thirty thousand dollars. It's actually, I mean, it varies year to year, uh, because it depends on who gets that one eighty-seven five.
Yeah.
Um, some years is twenty-eight, some years is twenty-four, so.
Do you have a count or approximation of how many are passed, um, fifteen?
Yes, um, so right now, we have seventy-one point two eight positions that are sixteen or more. And we have sixty-four that are fifteen or less. Uh, which, that. I was a little bit surprised, I thought we were a little bit more experienced than that, um, but it's closer to fifty-fifty than I thought.
Uh. Number five, um, the additional service after the schedule, so we're talking about. Uh, a compensation per day for practices.
Yep.
It wouldn't be like weekends necessarily, like, if we could, like, I know. Me being involved in speech, like, you may not practice speech every day, but then you might have. Four-hour speech night, so.
Correct.
We probably. Would have to have Mr. Riley help us.
Correct.
Come up with stuff that we agree on, what's. What's fair, but uh.
And, and. The, the, the speech and drama and some of those. I don't believe they have set schedules, they have competition dates, um. And so some of the numbers that I've run are based off of the, the activities that the state sets dates for. This is the first official day of practice for soccer, and this is the first official postseason date of soccer. Um, uh, boys' basketball, for example, um, even girls' basketball, I think now, might have a first round bye in the postseason. So your, your, your original contract takes you up to that amount. Even though you don't necessarily win, you've advanced, so you're now putting in, it might be two extra days there, um. Currently with the, and the, and I believe it's just sports that are going, because I, I can't find a, a calendar for the um speech and drama and things like that. The average per diem is right about eighty-five dollars per sport. Um, and so the number, um, fifty dollars per day. For, and it wouldn't have to be like, if I'm a freshman basketball coach and I haven't been going to varsity practices, I wouldn't be included in that, but. If I am a freshman baseball coach that's been continuing and, and done that just as a regular part of my day, then they would be included, um. I did run some numbers there that if every activity, uh, every sport made it to a state final, I think the total number is something around. Forty-four thousand dollars, if everybody went as far as they could go, um. Speech and things like that, those again are kinda like set dates, um. Where like track, you have your, your postseason qualifier, and then you, it's. Five or six days, four or five days later that you're um competition, and it would, it wouldn't be weekends, it would just be how many. Calendar days, five days, Monday through Friday. That would be included.
One question that I would throw out with regards to that is, there's some sports, at least, you know. Traditionally, almost every year, if you're the cross-country coach. You're gonna go to state, if you're the wrestling coach or um, you know, track, we're always gonna have. Kids at state, so is the expectation that, oh, from the state qualifier on, it's like. We know darn well that we're always gonna at least have somebody running at state track.
I have been in places where that hasn't been the case.
Yeah.
Um, and um, I don't feel that, I, 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 I believe that. Part of that is because of the work that the coaches have put in, um, and. They have done it for a long time without being compensated for that, um. I think it's. Difficult to say that qualifying for a state tournament is, it's. It's, it's hard to say it's, it's expected, it is an expectation of the teams, there's a lot of goals, but there are groups that, maybe this group this year. That isn't the expectation because of where they're at. And maybe a team exceeds that expectations and get there, um, but just based off of the time that people put in. If. If I, as a teacher, I'm asked to do additional workouts on my contract, then, um, because it, th- this is where that, that started in our uh. Coaching contracts, there's a line that says, if you don't complete. Your duties for that day, that day's uh pay is withheld, just like you would as a teacher or anything like that. But we, it doesn't say, like, teachers one, one hundred ninety-one, or whatever that fraction would be, um. It doesn't say that on those coaching contracts, so if I. If I don't go to practice tomorrow for middle school track. How, what am I being deducted, right, so that's kinda where it came from, and then it's like, well. If I'm working extra days, now what am I being compensated for? Cause if it's gonna be taken away, I think there should be an option for it to be added.
Yeah, it's just, whether it means anything or not, there's a distinction between. Sports where you qualify for state as a team and where you have individuals, you know. It's a lot easier to qualify for, to have a qualifier for state track than to have the basketball team. Make the state tournament or the baseball or softball, uh, it's a.
Yeah, for sure, uh, and. Individual sports have individual situations, um, wrestling is one where it's much tougher to qualify for the state. Dual tournament than it is individual tournament, but that coach is still showing up. Every day regardless of the team or individual, um, and there are, there's, there are kids, even if one. Track runner qualifies for, for say, one wrestler, there's other kids that are coming to practice and. Um, to help them prepare and things like that, so I understand your questions, but that individual coach is still putting in the time, whether it's one or twenty-five.
Do you have a breakdown on what that looks like? We'll call it sport by sport. Cause say you're. Like past experience and what I do, I mean, so maybe you've got your head coach, maybe you got an assistant, but football, you've got head coach plus.
Mm-hmm.
So. Have those numbers broken out as well.
I. Do by sport, um. Yes, I have the, what would, what would it cost per day by sport by week, and then if it continued through the full postseason? Um, cause some of those, like, wrestling or track, it's your postseason qualifier, and then the, these are the dates for the, the uh. State meet, where like basketball, volleyball, football, if you went on Wednesday, you play on Monday and, and those things, so. I took the numbers out to the state finals, um. So, like, like I said, if it was, if every group that I looked at made it to the state finals, it's like forty-four thousand dollars, usually, um. Which was great expectation to have, chances of that happening every year are pretty minimal.
Um, you have uh an overall, like, if we. Like, were to cost out the, the, the basic uh, what I would say. Uh, salary schedule changes, so I'm thinking one, two. Three, four are kinda the elements that.
Yep.
We would normally cost out, do you have a cost and a percentage for what that is?
Uh, I don't think I have a percentage, but I have a cost, so. For a combined four percent on the MA plus and one percent on sixteen through thirty is about two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, for everyone that's currently eligible for step six is about two hundred and fifty thousand. And that includes FICAN Ipers on those amounts. And with the current. Staffing, uh, where we're at this year.
Um. Did you age?
Yes, it's aged, yeah, yes, so the current, the current group aged one year, yes.
Okay. And that includes insurance as well?
Uh, I believe the increase in insurance, Kathy might thought, but there's a sixty-five thousand. Or a hundred and thirty-seven, whatever staff. That's the number I have.
Yeah, sixty-one, six oh seven.
Yeah, I guess I should've said one, two, three, four, and six are usually what gets costed. Okay. Um. Uh, eights or dimes struck me as something I know, I've seen, it's not uncommon for that language to be in other contracts. Um, staff member fills in during their prep periods that encompass for traditional subs, so you're saying. Whatever subpay is divided by.
Yeah.
The amount of time.
Yeah, if it's a, high school be one fourth and then middle school and others, whatever that time period would be.
Okay. Um. Do you have a feel for how often that happens? I mean, I'm against it, I'm just curious.
I do not, it was just mentioned that staff feels happening more often in the past.
Uh. And. Nine sounds like. A delineation on. Like, how much do we pay, like, the guy who does the shot clock?
Uh, number ten, you mean?
Yeah.
Okay, it's a great question, so in the language right now, for working any event, whether it's ticket, tickets, or shot clocks, or scoreboards. It's listed as twenty-five dollars per event, um, but different events pay different amounts based on the length. So I'll use basketball as an example because I'm experienced in, so if it's one or two games, you get twenty-five dollars. If it's a quad, it's forty, and then we occasionally host those border battles where there's up to like five or maybe six games, I think that's fifty dollars, um. And, um, the only amount that's listed in the contract is twenty-five, or, yeah, the contract's twenty-five dollars. Um, so. If someone knew, like, oh, hey, this job paid more, they might be more apt to sign up for that job.
Okay.
Um, or just knowing, like, a quad pays forty as opposed to a single or a double pays twenty-five, uh, just so that people know. Uh, because there've been questions and it, and there's a little issue this year where, um. The amount paid out was different than what uh would have been, and it's getting worked out, but uh just so people know on the front end. And then they can, they can check.
Think I understand. Rest of the stuff.
And. Fourteen, all those, you know, separate items are.
Fifteen for the next, yeah, yeah. I just didn't know Mr. Riley was gonna be able to be here, and so then I, and I found out he wasn't, I just pricked him off, so he had us.
And those are the ones that we would say. Uh, cause we get the same list, we're medable to add them. Some of them, we kinda usually do that at the end, but we agree that this is the, the working list we're at.
Yes, yes. Yeah, and, and the, that conversation started, he, he just mentioned that doing it through the negotiation process is just cleaner.
Oh, for sure, yeah, so. Uh, I appreciate, I appreciate you guys.
It's nice we're on the same page, right, right, it's something we both, we would need more and more of that, so.
Absolutely.
Then, uh, Mr. Nimrod maybe could, if you had any questions on that from him, he and, he and Adam Owens just like started it, um, and he was able to be here, so. He could potentially answer some of those questions as well. If you have any.
I can understand everything. Well, uh, yeah, unless our, our team has questions, I think we have received your offer. And we'd like a five-minute time to. Get together and. I've brought, get our proposals ready for you, but.
I'll go. Thank you.
You bet.
Six people.
Six, I already saw.
Feel the love.
I'm, I'll start.
Yeah.
So I'll just start by saying, um, like, there's. Good news and, and, and bad news, and there's probably one part that, well, we'll need to. Get together with you guys on, on a calculator. Uh, so, uh, when we calculate costing it. I think we were at three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars just to age the salary schedule. And, um, so I don't think. As a kind of a caveat on that, we need to have calculators that work the same way. So it's not like the idea that maybe we'll go into exempt session tonight, I'm gonna strongly or just not to. For both of us, because we need to have Matt and Kathy and Tim and whoever else in a room and just make sure our calculators work the same. So that we know what, what it costs.
No alternative.
And, 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 uh, that being said, as we present this, uh, I guess the good news part is, uh. We're not far apart on overall cost, uh, but it's gonna seem dramatically different with the breakdown of all the stuff. So, um. I would just highlight that, that, uh, if. Well, hopefully, whatever we, when we get in a calculator, we agree on that, uh. That we kind of have a, a range of dollar amounts with, if your offer was kind of in the five hundred and twenty-five is what we calculated our offer. When Ron gets done, uh, explaining is good about four hundred and six, so, so I think that's a good news that we're not. Light years apart, so.
Yeah, and I think, uh. The, uh. You know, again, not saying anything anybody doesn't know. We've all been kind of painted into a corner by a legislature that continues to offer two percent every year. When it costs over three percent just to age a salary schedule, so I wish that, uh, we had, uh. A little more generosity to be able to pass around, that, um, the other. Unfortunate thing is, uh, the other general enrollment trend, um. We're not walkie or rankety or Johnston, so we're always looking at a smaller pie every year. Um, but generally, I think a lot of the things that were included as, you know, what I refer to as language things are good ideas, so. I think that, uh, once we figure out the calculator issue. Uh, we can, um, have some productive discussions and hopefully move things forward, uh. Without, uh, too much, uh, difficulty, so.
Um, I do have a question about the, the calculator, if you will. Um, so. With the new TSS from the state. Um, this year, we are, so, we are afforded to receive approximately a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Um, if I cost out. Without that, without getting to the state minimums, uh, because I'm looking at that as. When someone ages, they age, and then the state is supplementing now to get them to the fifty and sixty-two. Correct, was it fifty-six, two-five?
Uh, it'll be fifty and sixty, sixty-two?
Okay, um. So with, with taking that amount out, I have a cost to age it. At one forty-six, then you throw in the sixty-five for insurance at two eleven. Which is that, how, are we close on that, if we throw in the hundred and ninety of the TSS, just off the top of my head?
Uh, I'm not, I'm not as good with those numbers that I'm not gonna pull that off without my head, so.
And the only reason I'm asking is that could be.
That could be where we're off.
Yeah, for this, um, looking at. That, that new TSS, if you will, whatever we want to call that. Um, and then do we have an amount of what that new TSS would have been last year? With the, uh, it's, this year's kind of a flat change, and with forty-seven-five, so it's twenty-five hundred, and then another. Two thousand?
Two thousand, yeah.
So like, those are flat numbers, but last year would have been much more random. So do we have any, any, uh, what that number would have been?
I record, um, just.
I know I have something somewhere, but I.
Would I be able to, can we get that, forget some point?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just again, so we're kind of talking same, same numbers.
Yeah.
As well. Um, and do you know, Kathy, that, that one ninety number will be, should be this year's TSS additional?
Um, I think you just sent me something, did you tell me?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I have to look that up, too.
Okay. Just again, so we're talking same numbers. Yeah, so another question I had was about, this, I mean, uh, maybe this isn't, I feel it's pertinent, just because it's a bunch of issue. At the last meeting that, uh, line on twenty-nine.
Yeah.
Um, has anything been discovered?
Yeah, that's, that's gonna be a, an audit or a, a budget amendment, that, that is the, the new debt service amount. Uh, but it was put in the administration line.
So it's putting the wrong.
Yeah.
Wrong spot, okay.
So that's gonna be a, oh.
A budget amendment next year.
Budget, budget amendment for next year, yeah. So.
I think that's all of our questions.
Okay, so I can get to that data and then we can just work on a time that, uh, works out. Uh, for the three of us to make sure that we're doing this, and, and like I said, I think the, the good news is. Uh, like, we're talking the same thing, we just gotta, uh, make sure that we're all on the same page.
Sounds good.
So.